All right, roll call please.
Councilmember Amundson?
Roll call.
Councilmember Amundson?
Here.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Here.
Mayor Merkey?
Here. If we could please stand for the pledge. Thank you all for coming. All right, Russell, I'm gonna pass this over to you for the President's Volunteer Service Award.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, proud to announce tonight that we have two other young men or young people in our community that have really assisted the town and done some remarkable things by their acts of volunteerism. And tonight, we're gonna be recognizing Pavaud Paul McCarr and Jashan Preet Singh. Stay at the lectern for one second. Unfortunately, Mr. Singh could not be here tonight because he's away at school, but standing in for him in accepting the award on his behalf is his brother. So, just wanted to recognize them formally. It's just remarkable with the work that they've done in terms of volunteering on behalf of the town. If you don't know, let me tell you a little bit about some of the things that they've done for us. So, Pavaud Paul and Jashan were instrumental in the first annual Unity and Diversity Run that we did last year. And if you don't know, we are having our second annual Unity and Diversity Run this coming Saturday. And once again, Pavaud Paul has led the charge. Unfortunately, Jashan could not be as involved this particular year with this event, as he is away at school, but he was involved somewhat in the beginning stages of it. However, they've also, it goes beyond just the run. They've participated in every event that we've ever, you know, kind of had since then. We've had the Interfaith Holiday Lighting here at Town Hall. They were instrumental in putting, helping us to put that together. They're instrumental in helping us with the town's birthday party that's being organized right now. They've been involved in that process as well. And it's just amazing that they give so much of their time with no expectation of anything in return. And it's just comforting to know that we have youth in our community that are willing to serve in that capacity without any expectation for anything other than just helping the community. So, there's something to be said for that. I also want to point out that Jashan, while he's not here, is also a reigning Mr. Southwest Rancher. So, he displayed many of his talents at that competition, and he was featured in our newsletter as well. So, I would just also want to point out that testament, or just to kind of identify how much volunteerism we're talking about, we're not talking about, you know, helping out here or there. Pavaud Paul's totals of volunteer hours and dedication to just to the town's causes is over 564 hours in the past year.
Wow.
And Jashan's were just over 500 hours as well. So, just two remarkable individuals. The town, the town is a certifying organization for the Points of Light Presidential Volunteer Service Award Organization. And we're able to, when we have people in our community that we want to identify as being exceptional volunteers, we're able to do that through that association. So, tonight, excuse me, I want to recognize Pavaud Paul McCarr and Jashan Preet Singh with these certificates.
Don't go anywhere. If you'll stand up here in the middle, we'll stand up behind you so we can get a picture. All right? If I can get the council to stand up and come over here, we'll stand up behind them.
Congratulations, you guys.
One other thing. If I can just say one other thing, as part of the award, there's a, congratulations. Well deserved, guys. Congratulations. As part of the award, he wants to recognize everybody on the other side, there's a, the actual award, a gold award, and then there's also a medallion for you guys to wear, and a pin. If you come up and receive that as well. I'll let Debbie do that.
Oh, that's cool. Sandy, you gotta get more pictures.
They ran away too quick. We didn't get a, get a chance to put it on them.
Sandy, maybe you can get a picture with their medals on.
Well, he's wearing it on behalf of his brother.
Yep. And one other little nugget of a surprise, at the, on the, behind the actual award, it's, it's within the actual, like, behind the actual piece of paper of the award, you can get to it. I'll show you how to get to it later. There's a letter from President Trump acknowledging your receipt.
Oh, okay.
Very nice.
See if they want it.
Very nice.
Wow. Awesome.
Boxers, thank you again.
Yep. You get a car, you get a car.
All right. All right. Keith, you announcing public comment?
Did you, did you guys want to do a presentation now regarding the 5K? They had a quick presentation, Mayor, if you would indulge them for five minutes?
All right, go right ahead.
We're waiting on the tech gurus.
I wanna laugh. Get one of them over there, it'll be fixed in a second. Apparently not.
Worked last night.
For the census stuff.
We're back into our caves.
All right, here we go.
Yeah, I'm leaving town. North Carolina.
Are you?
What happened?
What's going with you?
I think I'm flying. Rent a car, stay two days.
Hello, members of the town of Southwest Ranches and Town Council.
We'll have Mike up a little closer, do you see if it, uh...
First of all, we would like to thank you for recognizing us today. It is truly meaningful, and we could not be more thankful for the opportunity that this town has provided us. It truly wouldn't have been possible without this town's enthusiasm and, and support. Thank you so much. Today, the Sikh Youth Association is excited to inform you that we will be hosting our second annual, A Race for Unity and Diversity 5K Run and Walk, this Saturday, February 29th, 2020, at the Sikh Society of Florida, located on Sterling Road. Just as last year, we want to showcase the unity and diversity in our community. In other words, we want to invite people from various walks of life, cultures, religions, et cetera, and foster a sense of community and understanding among them. We strive to promote awareness and acceptance in our neighborhoods and encourage youth activism and community service in order to build a healthier society. The proceeds of this event will benefit the town's very own College Scholarship Fund, which offers financial aid for students entering college. During our inaugural, on, our inaugural year in 2019, we attracted more than 750 attendees and raised $10,000 for the town's scholarship fund. It was a spectacular event, complete with a pre-race circle of prayer, the town mayor's address, ethnic cuisines, and numerous cultural booths. We could not have done this without the town's support and enthusiasm, and especially the tireless work ethic of town administrator of Mr. Russell Minis.
In order to make this year's event even more interactive and exciting, we have gotten various religious organizations, service groups, companies, small businesses, et cetera, and our local community to join hands with us. However, to make our event truly that much more better, we ask for your support. We ask that each and every town resident bring themselves and their families to join us on February 29th. We encourage you to post on your social media sites to invite your friends as well. The event is much, is much bigger than the race. There will be a silent circle of prayer, cultural foods, beverages, and numerous interactive booths and tables. Best of all, even if you are not the fastest runner there is, you can register for the race and become eligible for two tickets for a cruise or a 42-inch flat-screen TV. We encourage you all to register as soon as possible. Pre-registered participants can pick up their race bibs this Friday at Runner's Depot Weston between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Again, for those of you wanting to skip the lines on race day, there will be an early bib pickup scheduled for tomorrow at Runner's Depot Weston between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Registration on race day will begin at 6:30 AM, then at 7:15 AM, there will be a silent circle of prayer consisting of religious, religious leaders all over our community. We urge you not to miss this. The race will begin at 7:30 AM, and following the end of the race, there will be numerous cultural cuisines and interactive booths, as well as an award ceremony. Best of all, even if you are not the fastest runner there is, you can register for the race and become eligible for two tickets for a cruise or a 42-inch flat-screen TV. Just to emphasize that you don't need to be the fastest runner in order to come out as a winner.
All right.
All in all, as we close in on our final two days of preparations, we ask you to join us to truly help us achieve our mission for unity and diversity. Every little contribution is important in helping the event become successful. You, you all can take a copy of the flyer with you home tonight, and we hope to see your families, your, and friends this Saturday. Thank you.
Look forward to seeing all of you out there on Saturday morning at 6:30. I'll be there. I'm not running, though. I am walking.
It's okay, Chief's gonna be there.
They offered to pick me up in a golf cart last year. Along the way, they said, "You okay, Mayor? Can you do it?" I said, "I'm good. Don't worry about it." So... Right. Stop for quail eggs, right? All right, Keith, public comment?
Russell, if you don't mind starting the... Mayor, there's three public comments tonight. David Kozinski, followed by Scott Tomasulo, followed by Jim Lasky.
Good evening. David Kozinski, 6411 Hollaty Trail. Last night at our HOA meeting, our board passed a resolution supporting racial diversity. And it's kind of stemmed into an unfortunate incident that happened last week on the 18th. Kind of dovetails into this 5K run for racial diversity. Garcia children let off the bus on West Palomino, Garcia children living within Sunshine Ranches, a neighborhood of the town. While they were walking home, a car drove by and hollered at them, saying, "Hispanics don't belong here. Get out of here." Came back again, threatened them again. And then, at one point, they drove by, made gun gestures with their hands, pooh, 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 mimicking a drive-by shooting. Andy and Russell and Danielle did the right thing. They, they did, they really, really honorable public servants. They assured them, went over to their home, assured them that this is not what the town stands for. And it, it's really the right thing to do. I spoke with Jeanette, and she says she has a charity that she set up called The Kindness Campaign. And it has a program called HOOTS, which is H-O-O-T-S, which is Helping Others Out of the Shadows. It's to help children of the undocumented people that live in our town. And these are the people that are cleaning our horse stalls, that are working on our farms. And a lot of these people are undocumented. We just kind of ignore them, that they're not part of our community. But this program helps, has helped 20 children with education, teaching them to learn English, healthcare, because, you know, there, there's this major misconception that these undocumented families are somehow entitled to food stamps or public assistance. They're not. And this charity is, is a good part of our town, and should be really supported. So, moving on, we have our HOA elections coming up next month, and I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Final speaker, Jim Lasky. Putting these away.
Hello, I'm Scott Tomasulo. I live at 14400 West Palomino Drive, and I live on this street that David was just talking about, the Garcia family. And yes, that did happen. It, you know, it happens in these communities. I think, you know, we need to get, find out who these kids were, contact their families, and follow through with trying to find out what the cause is. But I think most importantly, this whole situation is, you know, we have a lot of children in this area. And that spot at Volunteer and West Palomino Drive is basically a hub for all the school traffic in the mornings and the afternoon for buses, you know, picking up and dropping off. St. Thomas Aquinas has a bus pickup right there in the public shopping center in the morning, really early. But I think it's really in need of crossing, you know, stripes or some type of signage, bus pickup area, speed zone control, something in that area, because there has been documented accidents when kids have been standing in that intersection, crossing the streets. There's no hash marks in the road. And I really think that we, we also need some type of, maybe a pint, a painted pedestrian walk down West Palomino, because there are kids that communicate, or that commute, commute from our town to Davie to be picked up, and then the kids come across from Davie to our town to play. And I think it's a, you know, a big oversight that we need to deal with, because it's just a matter of time before something happens. And the other thing is, I wanted to mention in regards to the US-27 project, I support that project, and I think we need to protect that taxable asset. And I think the council and the town can come up with a strategy to work with that situation and, and secure it, because we do not want that property to be annexed to Pembroke Pines and let them torture our residents out there in that area. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Jim?
5780 Southwest 188th Avenue, Jim Lasky, sorry, got it backwards. But as you heard in the last year and a half, I've been a pain in the butt about a couple of issues. One of them is the monstrosity that's going up next to me without the proper drainage, for one instance. In talking with Kevin Hart the other day, he's mandated by the state of Florida for a certain size drainage easement. It doesn't make any difference how big the property is, or the amount of impervious or pervious, or the amount of sewage or whatever, okay? That's all he's required to provide. So, when you blow past that, you could have a potential to contaminate the, the whole water supply. You're worried about US-27 and a guy who has to perform, has to have monitoring wells next to every single tank in the ground, and probably in the next five years, probably half the, the truck traffic is gonna be electric anyway. So, the whole thing is gonna transition to something you probably haven't even thought of yet. So, that's my thing for tonight, but I also like to recommend the Comprehensive Planning Board start to use a little bit of forethought, and there maybe have a ratio between the size of development and the amount of, of water retention a property has to have. That's a simple way to protect my rural lifestyle. You shouldn't be put in a 7,000-square-foot house with all this impermeable backyard that they've got going on without the proper stormwater protection, because that stormwater protection's gonna keep the seepage, the sewage, out of the water. You're worried about pollution. It's a simple thing to figure, and plan a little bit. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. No more final speakers, Mayor.
Okay, now, board reports. Any board reports? See, no board report? All right. Councilmember comments?
I'll go first.
Go ahead, Gary.
Hey, just a few things. I'll be brief. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, as usual, for coming. We really do appreciate it. And those of you who are tuning in on YouTube, we appreciate that also. It's a, a really good resource to use. I know I listen to YouTube because of my hearing disability all the time. I listen to our meetings, and just to make sure I got it all right in my head. Just want to make a few announcements. Nothing too controversial coming, coming up right now. We've already talked about the 5K walk, really, big effort, really good thing going on for our town, the town scholarship, that's coming up this Saturday. Then at nighttime, we have Bingo at the Barn at 6:00 PM. Dinner's included. I think their tickets are $25. Am I correct? Twenty. Okay, $5 off. And December has them, and she's right back there. December, raise your hand. That's her. Okay, if you want to get tickets, she has a few left. And then we have the Barn Dance on the 7th of March at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $50 each. I believe you have to contact Kathy Sullivan for that. Debbie Green, help me out with that. Is that correct? Do you have to contact Kathy? She has remaining tickets, or no? Okay, thank you. She can be contacted through, through Town Hall, through the, the main desk at Town Hall. Anyway, the proceeds go to the scholarship fund, and it's a really nice dinner and a really good time. I believe Outback is catering it and some other restaurant I never heard of. The, the town, the town birthday party is on the 4th. I don't want to get in, too deep into that, except I'm really looking forward to it on, in April. I've got ringside seats to the parade, so I'm real happy about that. Also, too, the Rural Arts Board is starting the, the photo contest is for pictures taken at the town birthday party for next year's calendar. And there's flyers in the back of the room. They give you the rules and the what fours and the, and the how-tos. So, if you could, you know, pick those up on the way out, we'd really appreciate it. Take some pictures at it. It's gonna be a lot of fun. It's gonna be a great event. Just a few other things. We have Flowmobile coming here on the 26th at Town Hall, right here, from 10 to, 10 to 1. Senator Rubio's office is gonna be here on the 12th from 10 to 11. We have a Broward County Property Appraiser here on the 16th of March from 11 to 1. And we have Hazmat at the Barn from 8 to 2. Is shredding gonna be there, Andy? No, no shredding at this one. Okay. So, but it, it's a good way to get rid of tires, paint, batteries, things of that nature.
What's the date on that?
Fourteen, I had it somewhere here. 14? Okay. Thank you, whoever shouted that out. Then we have us, our second time. The first one was a big success, and we're doing it again. On the 21st, we have the pet adoption here at Town Hall, put on by Broward County. It'll be from 11 to 2. It'll be in this room. They have a wonderful system worked out, lots of really nice dogs and cats here. And if you're looking for a pet, this would be the place they're coming to you. They're already been vaccinated. They're already, they're ready to go. And so, it was a wonderful event last year, and it should be even better this year. So, I urge everybody to come see that. And that's about it, Mayor. I'm out of gas.
Awesome. You'd like to go next?
I'll go.
Go ahead, Bob.
So, a couple of things. Andy, I like Mr. Tomasino's idea of a crosswalk on volunteer. Now, we don't have any schools in town, so I don't believe we have any crosswalks yet. I don't know if there are constraints. I think you need to look into it, because if we put up a crosswalk, do we have to supply crossing guards, et cetera, et cetera. So, I like the idea a lot. I mean, anything to do with safety, but yeah, if you can come back to us with options. Thank you. Like that idea. Second thing, Gary briefly touched on the birthday parade and party. For those who aren't aware, and you're gonna see more in the town newsletter and...
Bob, it's on the agenda.
It's on, shut up, Bob. Safe time, Bob. Is the census on the agenda? No, right? Okay, that's a safe topic. So, the census people have been to a couple of our meetings. They've been to our council meeting. They've been to some of the HOA meetings. Is everybody aware that they're gonna get notification in two weeks? The 13th starts the census, March the 13th. Now, this is the first time ever they're gonna be doing it on the web. And, you know, you'll, you'll get a, a letter in the mail, and it'll give you information about how to go out to their website and take care of it on the, online. And it, for us, I mean, I've been through now six censuses in my life. The first one, I don't remember. But, you know, my parents used to make a big thing out of bringing us all around, and they explained what the census was all about. So, since I'm about 11 years old, I know what the census is. And we've done the same thing with our kids. Now, our oldest one, she's moved out. And our youngest one said she doesn't need to be there. We told her, "Yes, you do." So, we'll fill it out as a family. Now, I heard something from Weston on the way over here on the radio. It was on the news on the way over here. And Weston is deeply concerned because of the number of, I guess, refugees from Venezuela and people from other places, that they're only gonna get 55% of their count. Now, what that means for Weston is less federal dollars flowing into the city, less federal dollars flowing into Florida. It's all tied to the census, as well as, I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but our, our congressional districts are also carved up by census data. And I'm not sure, but I, my sense is that our, our state representative's districts are probably carved up the same way, because again, it's based on the same data. So, reporting or not reporting can mean the difference between Florida getting additional votes in Congress and, and having more influence, and as well Broward County. You know, if, if we're undercounted by, I'll just pick a number, a third in Broward County, we then start to overlap into Dade and into Palm Beach County in terms of our districts. And, you know, we deserve a say, too. We live here. Now, one of the things they were very clear on when they, they talked to us at the HOA meetings, and they made this point also on the radio just now, is that the Constitution says that the government will count... that the government will count all the people, not all the American citizens, nothing to do with where you're from. And the woman who was at the HOA meetings this week was saying federal law protects that information. And I remember the president a couple of years ago trying to get access to that information and told him that's basically sacrosanct. The government can't use that for any other purposes than what it's defined to be used for. So if you submit census data, it's probably a lot more secure than most of the other data. And what the woman said last night, and this makes a lot of sense, you know, we've had relatives come and stay once upon a time for a while that were thinking of moving to Florida. If they're living with you, I don't mean staying for the weekend, but if they're living with you and you fill out the census documentation, they need to be included. If you've got guest quarters out back that you rent out that, you know, don't show up on the radar, they need to fill it out too because it makes a difference to the population of our town and how many dollars we attract from the federal government. And it really adds up. The state of Florida is freaking out right now because they're worried because we have such a large transient population that will be undercounted and not get our fair share of the federal dollars that'll go elsewhere if we're not adequately represented. So you know, the example they used on the radio, everybody is completely comfortable about posting pictures on Facebook and tagging all their family and friends, but they don't want to fill out the census data. You got more risk on Facebook, trust me, than you'll ever have on the census data because this is, it's been secured since seventeen ninety now. Of course, times have changed, but it's one thing you can take to the bank. When you put your name and your address on there, nobody is going to show up at your door, you know, depending on your nationality or your immigration status. So I just wanted to put that out there. They're pretty aggressive about it. My mother was a census taker when I was a kid, so I know their tactics. They've changed a little bit over the years. So between eleventh, the twelfth, March the twelfth and twentieth, everybody's going to get an invitation to respond and you know, we're all expected to try to get it filled out in that timeframe. If you don't, they then will send a reminder letter between March the sixteenth and twenty-fourth. If you don't, they'll then send a reminder postcard between March the twenty-sixth and the third. Then if you don't fill it out, they'll go back to the old style. They will send you a reminder letter and a paper questionnaire. So whatever it takes is their attitude. Now, between April the twentieth and twenty-seventh, they'll send a final reminder postcard before they show up at your house. So at that point, they're going to be looking for somebody to answer the door and the woman, do you remember the woman's name Doug, who we had, who we saw up in Tallahassee?
I don't, but Emily sure does.
Marilyn Stevens gave us some great anecdotes. You know, they're really serious about getting the head count of the country and whatever they can. She actually confided that they'll start knocking on your neighbor's door. Do you know who lives next door? Do you know how many kids they have? How many adults live there? It sounds pretty invasive, but they're pretty serious about getting an accurate count. So you know, the simplest thing to do would be to, you know, fill it out online two weeks from now and if that doesn't work for you, you can wait until April and get the paper survey and fill that out if you're more comfortable with that. But one way or another, they want to count everybody and they use as many tactics as they can to try to get an accurate count. So I just wanted to mention that because it's important for our town too. I mean, this, our census information is important. We need to know how many people live here. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
G'day. Awesome.
On a personal note, and because this is on YouTube, I want, I had some people at the last meeting object to how I actually arrive at these meetings. I said what I had to say then, but this is actually a thank you to everyone who took the time to text me and email me that if I ever needed a ride, they were happy to assist. So I am thanking you all. If I, I don't know where the cameras are, the camera. So thank you very much. I appreciate the love and the affection you sent. Thank you.
That's it? Dee?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Well, I just want to thank everyone for coming out and participating and taking the opportunity to come see us, listen, speak your piece, talk to us. And hopefully, a lot of you will be participating Saturday morning for the run and walk. So anyhow, thanks for coming out. Greatly appreciated. Legal. You're up to bat.
Sure Mayor, I'll be brief. Couple of weeks left in session. Town's got some important legislation that we're tracking. Hopefully, we'll have good news in a couple of weeks that we can share. The budget this year is very tight. We have some projects that are potentially in for funding consideration, but they're about a hundred million apart right now between the House and- Billion? Is that what?
Billion.
Billion, sorry.
With a ninety billion dollar budget? That's Trump change.
Yeah, so a billion. I thought it was a hundred million. I must have counted the zeros wrong. A billion dollar difference, so we're hopeful that at least some of our projects will make it. And daily, I've been on the phone with Tallahassee and our lobbyists to make sure that goes okay. And other issues, we had a, it's been a long week. A lot of illegal buildings going on in the town now. Illegal construction, meaning construction without permits. When things are constructed without permits, it actually hurts everyone in the town because not only does it potentially create a unsafe situation, which is what occurred this week, but it also is a situation where, you know, it, the property values don't recognize the actual improvements being made. So it hurts all the taxpayers and people who live adjacent to the site and the people living in the site as well. The town has probably one of the lowest building permit fees in the Broward County right now. They do everything to process plans as quickly as possible and so we've met several times about this already this week. And you know, my advice would be get building permits to anyone thinking of build here because it's becoming a problem that the town is recognizing and working to ensure that people are getting their permits. Third thing that occurred this week, remember a long time ago, and I'm going to look at Steve Breitker because he's one of the main impetus before it, we actually had an issue with Franklin Academy. And we had an issue because they were not only coming within the jurisdiction of the town, even though it's a carve-out for Pembroke Pines, but they decided to build a public road and that at the end of the public road, they deeded a small little strip of land to Franklin Academy and then they put a gate to block everyone from going through from Southwest Ranches. And we called it a spike gate because that's what it is. If you lived in Pembroke Pines, you were allowed to go through it, but if you were in Southwest Ranches, you couldn't go through it. Pembroke Pines believed wrongly, as I told them back then, that they could do it, you know? So we entered into litigation with them about five years ago on that. Like always, and I tell this to anyone litigating in Broward County, the larger municipality wins in circuit court ninety-nine percent of the time in Broward County. I don't know why, you can speculate, but that's generally what occurs. So in that case, the city of Pembroke Pines prevailed at the circuit court level. Went to the Fourth DCA. The Fourth DCA opinion came out this week and the town and Wesley Clark, who was the litigant for the town, they're one on all factors. Pembroke Pines is required to pay attorney's fees, costs, damages, and the Court of Appeals ruled that it constituted a full taking under the law for all of those Southwest Ranches property owners that lined up over that fence. As a result of that case, the second part of the case, which is opening up the gate itself, is now moving ahead full speed. I will once again predict that I believe the town will prevail in that at some point because what they did was illegal then, it's still legal now. I got a call from CA Miami, who was the original school developer, and basically they asked today how they could be let out of the case. And I said, you have tremendous liability now and as a result of this, you're not going to be let out of the case unless you get rid of that gate. So this is moving quicker now, but I just bring you the good news that the town did fully prevail in that matter. Other than that, is there anything else Gary that I'm missing? No? Okay, other than that, no further public illegal comments, Mayor.
All right. Andy Burns, you're up to bat.
Thank you Mayor. Just have one item. I want to give you all an update on the nursery ordinance, which was originally drafted, was very far-reaching, came to you all in December. It was clear at the time that it did not certainly meet with the will of the public and council had serious reservations with it. You tasked me with taking that back, meeting with you all individually to try to gauge your sentiment to aspects of that. We simplified the ordinance down into a memo so that certainly any member of the public could pick it up and follow along with it. We got that feedback from you all at the last meeting. This week, I shared with you all the revised, which I think captured the consensus of the council, recognizing that any aspect of this or every aspect of this proposed ordinance requires a five oh vote. I was able to go through this with you all publicly at the last meeting, get your consensus on it. I now have the second version of the simplified ordinance, which I shared with you and concluding my comments tonight, I will put it out for the members of the public and we'll get that out there, trying to be fully transparent through this process to make sure we capture what the council is looking for. And the intent would be if we're able to do that, and you'll all give me feedback separately, but if we're able to do that, we will then draft that ordinance and bring it back forward to you. I'll say probably in March, maybe the second meeting in March for first reading. We'll obviously promote that with the public if anybody has any concerns on it. Certainly, the public will have the opportunity to weigh in. But that's where we are with the nursery ordinance, Mayor. Just wanted to give you an update on that and that's really all else I had tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Russell, number nine.
I believe that we want to read items nine and ten together, so if you-
For bookkeeping purposes, we'd like, because both nine and ten are essentially the same issue, it's dedicated right of way back to the town so that we can make roadway improvements. We're going to read them both in the record together so that you can vote on them together and public discussion will be together. Similarly, eleven, twelve, thirteen are the same items for three separate residents, but it's the exact same issue going a row, so we'll read them together so they can be voted on together as well. And then the final issue that Russell and I were just discussing, there's a discussion item on the agenda tonight for, as many of you know, Tommy Scorini is moving. And as a result of that, we have the opportunity to engage Tim Wyman as the new Police Civilian Coordinator Services for the town. A resolution for that is on your desk, so if you choose to act on that item, we would move fifteen from a discussion item to actually an action item so that we can adopt that tonight. Russell, many of you know, had the flu this week, so as a result, it was on as a discussion item, but you can feel free to move it if you desire. Okay, so Russell, if you could please read nine and ten together.
Sure. Number nine is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving and accepting a public right-of-way dedication along Southwest one eighty-sixth Avenue, accepting the perpetual maintenance obligation of said public right-of-way and providing for an effective date. Item ten is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving and accepting a public right-of-way dedication along Southwest one eighty-eighth Avenue, accepting the perpetual maintenance obligation of said public private, I'm sorry, public right-of-way and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved?
Second.
You read both, right? Or is that just one?
That's both items. That's nine and ten.
All right. Any public comment on this matter?
Neil Hollisworth, one hundred and ninety-ninth Avenue. Does this clear up all of the right-of-way issues on one eighty-sixth and one eighty-eight? And if so, why not?
Probably be a Rod question, but I don't see Rod. Is he? Okay. Go ahead sir.
Couple of months ago, I glanced at the documents on that. First of all, I don't know why, when we all talk about transparency, why there isn't more detail on every typical about the address of the typical instead of having to go to a schedule and try to guess which one of those things affects your property. The other thing I noticed about a typical detail on that road is I think you're trying to claim with your embankments and your water retention and the shoulder of the road, about fourteen feet. Is that correct? Or you don't want to answer? But anyway, if it does-
I'll let Rod answer, but go ahead.
Okay, well, he should answer because he's an engineer. Okay. What you've got to remember on one hundred and eighty-eighth Avenue is everybody's drain field drains towards the road. So you've got to start to add up the inches and the feet because after all said and done, the law says you have to be five feet away. That's a setback. No matter what your case is, five feet away from a drainage conveyance. That's a drainage conveyance, correct? It's going to go right into the canals and we're going to screw up our surface water, which you guys are so concerned about and rightfully so. So anyway, I would like you to think about that before you go claiming that because you don't say it in this amendment that you want fourteen feet from everybody's property or up to fourteen feet because I realize in some of the sample excavation that's going on, you vary a lot. So you know, the plans are the ones that take precedence in this case, so you've got to revise the plans, I would think. Anyway, think about it because a lot of people are going to be pissed off when they find out what you guys are up to. You're not being transparent. Anyway, thank you.
Steve Breitker, fifty-one twenty Southwest one ninety-fifth terrace. I wanted to, I think as we get deeper and deeper into the TISdoor implementation, when the plan, as we set it up initially, we really started to focus on the ones where there were not right-of-way issues, where everything was already in the town's possession and we could go ahead and perform the paving and the repairs there. But as we get deeper into the program, we're going to hit more and more of these properties that where for us to accomplish what we want to accomplish, we're going, the town is going to have to obtain the right-of-way in, with the permission of the property owners. So I think now is the time that we need to start to publish that process, to document it, to get it out there so that the residents can see it. They can start with identifying whether their property is in fact, whether they have the right-of-way or whether the town does. And then if they do not, if the town does not have the right-of-way and they won't be able to perform the paving without it, we need to start communicating that and laying out a process so that they can begin it so it's not a last-minute situation and so that it doesn't hold up the overall paving. Communication is always good and I think that we should begin that as soon as we can. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Yep.
Jason Halberg, fifty-seven fifty-one thoroughbred lane. I also agree with Steve on the fact that I think it's important that we get, you know, the right-of-ways from a lot of these properties that we don't currently have in order to maintain the street. I also wanted to highlight, there may be some inconsistencies here. There was a resolution that was for approval of GPE engineering and there is a whereas, it says the town's legal staff has confirmed that this group of roads have no right-of-way issues. Well, it seems like we do have some right-of-way issues here, so I'm not sure if I'm misreading that. And then there's also a memorandum here. Says, this was memorandum on two twenty-seven from Andy to the mayor. Says the town maintains most of Southwest one eighty-sixth Avenue, but a section of the row is missing. But I don't think we maintain most of that street. Most, there's, when I counted, eight out of forty-nine right-of-ways available and that's it. So just some stuff that if you guys want to look into, make sure that's correct. Thank you for your time.
Rod, if I could ask you to come up? Yeah. Public comment is closed, so Rod's going to answer some questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, a bunch of questions tonight, so I'm excited to answer them. So yeah, communication is extremely important to us. Um, this, uh, so out of the two right-of-ways, only one is associated with TIS Door, so I want to get that, uh, straightened out first and foremost. Uh, the right-of-way on 186th is just, um, a section of 186th where we have essentially like a checkerboard-type deal, where we have some right-of-ways in some areas and not in others, and we're trying to get uniformity. So that, that section falls under that, it's not part of TIS Door. Um, the one on 188th is, so, the gentleman did read a s- No, 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 I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The gentleman read a section of the, or some, some document about, um, legal checking, right? And we do check with legal, but in this particular case, the limits of TIS Door had ended where the, the asphalt on 188th ended. What happened through the process is that the gentleman that lived south of the limit wanted to get included into TIS Door, so. What the, what the coordination between engineering and legal is, is for the, the fine limits of the TIS Door project. Two years in advance, legal lets us know if there's any entitlement issues with the project. So that coordination does go on, it occurs, and we make sure everything's vetted and cleared before that. Mr. Lasky had a question about the, um, I guess the, the grading and the swales and, and the twenty-five feet. So, yeah, so, so, no, it's, it's a good question. Um, so what we do is, when we ask for right-of-way, we look at our minimum standards, our town minimum standards, and it's fifty-foot right-of-way width for a total section. Um, for, for, that's, that's our minimum standard for roads with, that are not cul-de-sacs. So, um, in the particular case of just one side of a street, we will ask for twenty-five feet. Normally, pavement ranges anywhere from eleven, twelve, ten feet, so if you're do, using an eleven-foot pavement width, you would assume that you have, uh, fourteen foot left for, to make the twenty-five foot total. So he is correct in that, in that dimension. From.
Yeah, okay, can't have you calling out to the public.
Yeah, whenever the drain fields are, are put in, I mean, again, it's, um, it's not a, it's not a function of our office. Uh, the drain fields and the, and the septic tanks all go through the, uh, the county, through permitting. Um, but, I mean, yeah, it's, it's something that they look at, I'm sure, when they permit and go through the process.
Okay, thank you, Rod. Appreciate it. Got a motion and a second?
Let me just ask, I'm not sure if this is a Rod question or a Keith question, but, you know, there, there was a comment made that made it sound like there's a lack of transparency about who's affected by this. You know, when I read through this, and I read this, you know, earlier in the week, uh, it says here, "The town hereby approves the conveyance of title for the land of the town by execution and delivery of quick-laden deeds from the residents who currently own the land," and that's in the packet here as well, so. Before we do any of this, we work with the resident. We acquire their land willingly, we're not taking anything, this is in an eminent domain case. Um, and then you've got the quickclaim deeds here. And we're, we're two years ahead on this right now? So, because this isn't for this round of TIS Door, this is for the next round, right?
Rod?
Rod?
186th, uh, right-of-way is not part of TIS Door. The 188th is part of this.
Right, no, that's what, that's my point. This is, this is out in the future.
Correct.
I took kind of Steve's point, that, uh, but, but my point is, is we're doing this while in advance, the residents have noticed, the residents are participating willingly, we're not taking anything, I just want to make it clear that there is transparency here.
Yeah, they reached out to us to dedicate.
Right, right.
Yeah.
There you go, so, thank you, Rod, and thank you, Keith.
Yeah, Councilmember Hartman just responded, you're absolutely correct. The, this is not funded in this current budget.
Right.
So we always get the right-of-way for the roads that are under consideration for TIS Door, at least two years ahead of time, sometimes more than that. In this case, you're correct, it was the residents who wanted their roads fixed, and in order to do that, they have to deed the road to us, or they have to pay to fix it. So this project is probably at least two years away, unless we get lucky.
Think that context is important for people to know. This isn't for this year's round of it, it'd be way too late at this point. Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Call, call the question.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Uh, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, we're going to read together.
Okay.
Uh, this is going to take me a minute, so bear with me.
All you need to do is long supplement the address after you. Okay, fine.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the City of Cooper City, providing water service to 13000 Lewin Lane and 13001 Lewin Lane, two single-family homes lying within the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town, providing that connectivity shall not occur until and unless Broward County adopts a new water and sewer connectivity regulation that exempts from mandatory connection homes currently located in the rural estates and rural ranches land use categories, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the super, uh, the City of Cooper City, and providing an effective date. Item twelve is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the City of Cooper City, providing water su, water service to 12901 Sterling Road, a single-family home lying within the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town, providing that connectivity shall not occur until and unless Broward County adopts a new water and sewer connectivity regulation that, that exempts from mandatory connection homes currently located in the rural estates and rural ranches land use categories, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Cooper City, and providing an effective date. Item thirteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the City of Cooper City, providing water service to 5801 Southwest 130th Avenue, a single-family home lying within the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town, providing that connectivity shall not occur until and unless Broward County adopts a new water and sewer connectivity regulation that exempts from mandatory connection homes currently located in the rural estates and rural ranches land use categories, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Cooper City, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve all three? Second.
Bob.
Second.
Okay, public comment?
Mayor, Town Council, Scott Kleiman, I'm counsel for Robert Lewin on item number eleven. Thank you for your consideration, I'm available if there are any questions from the council.
Thank you.
David Sears, 5501 Southwest 130th Avenue. My question is, is can we get water? Does this prohibit us from getting water run all the way to my house, first off? And second off, they already dug it, it's already sitting there. They've already flooded everybody's front yards, running the water to get to be able to sanitize the lines. And now they're bringing it to you guys for approval? Shouldn't they have done that before they dug all the way down Sterling Road? And then everybody's front yards?
Any additional public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed, back to us, any additional discussion?
Keith, just a question or two. Section two, which is in all three documents, so I'll only ask the question once. That is preventing Cooper City from running any other water unless the laws change at the county level, right?
Well, uh, hold on. Now, that, would that basically, first of all, let me answer a couple of questions, somebody to clarify this. Uh, what, what David Sears said is, is actually interesting, uh, so I want to touch on that, which leads to your answer. If this were Sunrise, this would have never come before you. Okay, it would have been handled directly by staff, uh, and it's a total different process. Because of the type of utility that Cooper City is running, they have an, an actual agreement that has to be approved by the Town of Southwest Ranches, which is why it's before you. This has never come back, before you before, the way I understand it, is because Cooper City didn't have additional water capacity until recently, that they were going to give water to other communities. So this is a new thing coming before you, so to answer David's question, the reason why it's coming before, I don't know where David went, uh, sorry, David. The, the reason why it came to the council late in this case is because the Lewins did everything properly in terms of permitting the lines, and it was only after the fact that they permitted the lines, that they got the agreement from Cooper City, and Cooper City said, "Now go get this approved by the Town of Southwest Ranches," which required it to go to the Town Council. So it's not a normal scenario, and it won't be happening like that in the future. Now to answer Councilmember Hartman's question, which leads into that, uh, what this basically says is, in the future, for Cooper City to extend additional lines for water, they have to come back before the council. They, they are not allowed just to willy-nilly extend lines, uh, throughout the town, without coming before the council. And to answer David's second question, if you would like to connect to Cooper City's line, I'm sure they'd love for you to pay for it, and then that agreement would come back before the council as well. Um, I spoke to Senator Geller earlier this week, I think Wednesday, um, and I am almost a hundred percent certain, and I never say that, that the law will be approved the way that we have asked it to be approved. So I don't have, uh, any, uh, trepidation at all that, uh, we will still exempt our, our rural ranches and rural estate land use categories from mandatory connection. So I'm happy to report that, it took us months to get there. And I think Councilmember Hartman brought it to my attention, must have been eight months ago, six or eight months ago.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, we worked hard, and, and it was accomplished. And as a result, the, the residents, uh, get what they want, which is the water, and their neighboring residents, uh, don't have to, or are not going to be forced, uh, to connect to the lines.
So we're just waiting for the county, right?
Yeah, it, it's coming before them, I think, the next meeting, because I spoke to him this week, so he just wanted to make sure that we were okay with the final language. I have sent it to all of you, uh, I believe, uh, most of you have responded. Um, so i- it does exactly what we want. I, I will go one step further, just because we have time tonight, in that, uh, Jeff Cadence mentioned previously that, uh, every town and every property in the, the town virtually is rural ranches and rural estates.
Right.
Uh, he re-looked into that, that's actually the case. Uh, the mayor and Mary Gay Chapels came to my office today, because, uh, she still believed that she was ag. And, uh, when we pulled up the map and showed her, we pressed the county land uses, she goes, "Well, who did that?" And I said, "It was way before me," you know? So, um, uh, what, what happened, and, and I, this can diverge for one second, but it's important for you to know, that originally there were a lot of properties that were zoned ag in the town, okay? And, um, before the town was formed, they were, when Broward County was changing land uses, not zoning land uses, those residents, including Mary Gay, went before the then-county commission and said, "I'll fight like heck, you know, to keep my ag, don't get rid of my ag." Well, they didn't get rid of her ag, they left the zoning ag, but they changed the land use. So, so as a result of that, we have properties in the town, and this created an issue recently that the mayor and I met with residents about, in which the, the land use trump zoning, and the land use for these ag properties doesn't meet the zoning. And it's causing a problem, which Andy will meet with you all about, uh, soon. There's a couple of things that are allowed in the ag zoning category that are not allowed in the, in the rural ranches, rural estates, land use category. And, and what Gay was very surprised about today is she thought she had rights to do something on her property, including slaughterhouses and, and the like, that are not allowed under the rural ranches, rural estates, land use, but that's not something that this town created. That goes back way before the town's formation. So what she suggested today, and what Andy's going to speak to you all about, is somehow making sure that the ag zoning matches the underlying rural ranches, rural estates, land use, so that when new buyers buy in the town, they're not just looking at the zoning code and thinking they could do everything in there, that they understand that there are limitations, you know, based on the underlying land use. Happy to speak about this further, I've diverged from this topic, but it was important, because it came out in a couple-hour meeting today, uh, to explain how that occurred. So, uh, I'm comfortable with the water now, based upon what Councilmember Hartman wanted, which was the, the protection of the, uh, neighbors, not being forced to hook up. I'm very comfortable with that, and as a result, I recommend that you approve all three of these, uh, tonight.
Call the roll.
I have a quick comment for Russell.
Sorry.
You handed me this mic? Where's the wipes for it? This is absolutely the grossest thing I've ever had in my hand.
Picky, picky.
Call the question.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, do we want to, uh?
We have the, we have the, the agreement for the Police Civilian.
Right, 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 I was going to say, do we want to switch that to this new one we got handed, as far as the, uh, resolution?
Mayor, Mayor, the, the next item on the agenda was, was Sandy was going to give you all an update on, on the town birthday party.
Right.
But if you'd rather close with that, and, and, and go to the other business, we could certainly do.
Yeah, if you guys don't mind, I'll bump this.
So we want to move item number fifteen ahead?
Yes, please.
So, uh, the.
Yeah, if you would.
Well.
Second.
Okay, call, call the question.
Ju- just for the record, you're moving that item to an actual action item.
Yes, move to an action and bumping it. So we're going ahead of.
I got it. Russell, you need to call the roll on it?
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, on the next item, uh, as you all know, Tommy Scorini retired from Davie Police and became our, our service aide working here in the building. Uh, as you also know, Tommy is relocating, actually as of Saturday, to Blue Ridge, Georgia. As a result of that, we underwent a search, and we've identified Tim Wyman, although your, your contract data is under his given name, George. Uh, Tim, who recently retired from BSO, well, actually, almost two years ago, was available, and we find him to be a good fit. What we're asking you to do is approve the same, same contract, same terms and conditions of Tommy's contract, and I would like to ask Tim to come up and, uh, introduce himself to you as well, first.
Okay.
And since I feel like there has to be a story behind the use of the word "Tim" instead of "George," you can explain that. You beat me to it.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Uh, yes, uh, when I hear George, I turn around and look for my father, because, uh, that was his name. As, uh, Andy said, I am a thirty-one-year-retired law enforcement officer with the Sheriff's Office, retired a couple of years ago. As a small-town boy that grew up in central Kentucky, I know the rural lifestyle. I feel right at home here, and I think I'm going to really enjoy working here. So, thank you.
Awesome. Perfect.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Deseconding. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed, back to us, any additional questions?
We're feely touchy here. We love hugs, so you better fit in with us, or you'll get the boot.
I don't think that'll be a problem.
All right, awesome.
And just so the council knows, Tommy's last official day is the twenty-ninth of February, and Tim is coming in directly, even though he's there now, he's technically starting on the first of March, uh, but the first workday, I think, is the third or something.
Okay, awesome, call the question.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
All right, back to, uh, Sandy.
That would be me. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm happy to report that the Birthday Party Committee has been working real hard, and things are coming together. I would especially like to thank.
Move the mic a little closer to you.
Oh, sorry, okay, is that better? Oh, my. I would especially like to thank Vice Mayor Schroder, who is our liaison, for lending her support, and Councilmember Hartman, who has also been very helpful. On Saturday, April fourth, a day will begin with a parade along 178th Avenue, beginning at ten AM. We have a pretty good lineup to date, and welcome all residents to participate, whether you have a float, a golf cart, or just want to walk the parade route to show your Southwest Ranches support. The parade will end at Rolling Oaks Park, where the party will begin with live country music from Sucker Cut, Sucker Punch Band. The par, the barbecue will consist of hamburgers and hot dogs, and all the fixins. We will have demonstrations and static displays from Davie PD, and the Fire Department, and other entities. Activities will consist of a tree dedication, carnival rides, carnival games, face painting, slides, bounce house, rock, rock climbing, and most important, a mechanical bull for both adults and children. both adults and children. All this is at no cost to residents. Space and time to register for the parade is coming to a close, and I have applications here and in the back of council chambers for all to use. Lastly, it is not too late to be a sponsor for this event, and I also have applications for that as well. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I don't know. Anybody else wanna jump in, or ask any question?
Sandy, can you mention the parade route and the times?
The parade starts at ten o'clock on one-hundred-and-seventy-eight, yes.
Mather Boulevard.
But where on Mather?
And it starts at the south, southern end.
It starts at the very south end and runs right up to the barn.
Okay, so it's starting at the south end, running up the barn, turn down the driveway, and then, uh-
Yep.
Flots will be parking at-
Along the circle.
At the end of the road, at the, along the road, or halfway through the driveway?
Probably around the circle, we're gonna identify that with Davie, uh, Police.
Okay.
Um, I, I would just like to say, it started out where there was like a million, billion, trillion things on the chart, and, uh, the people that have showed up have done an incredible job of narrowing it down and making it really nice, and Sandy, there are no words to say how, what a wonderful job you've done.
Uh, thank you.
It, it is, it has really been great watching you go through all the different phases,